All right, good evening. We're calling this special session of the Council Board of Education to order. This meeting has been appropriately advertised. Roll call, please. Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mrs. Devine?
Here.
Mrs. Maya?
Here.
Mrs. McColsky?
Here.
All right, Mrs. Seltzer's absent. Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mrs. Z? Oh, she's absent. Mr. McMillan's absent. Mr. Dilkes?
Here.
And Mr. Cho?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we have a short meeting today, but we do have a couple of items to discuss in Committee of the Whole. So is there a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Awesome. And all in favor? All right. So first, I'm going to kick it to Dr. McDowell for Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. As always, we would like to bring continued positive attention to our Panther Pantry located in the back. Panther Pantry is a community service project led by one of our amazing staff members, Ms. Neisner, in the back of the room, and it is also co-led with student participation. They are accepting donations of food items, non-perishable items, and cash, and all of the proceeds go to needy families in Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland. And so, please stop by. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. All right. So there's one topic that I want to discuss during Committee of the Whole, and we'll actually discuss the tax levy resolution during the Buildings, Grounds and Finance Committee section, so Section 4. But there's one topic that I do want to discuss during Committee of the Whole, which is about what came up, I think, on Tuesday, which is the discussion about $225,000 provided by the mayor for the contract. And I think there's, I want to discuss this here. Typically, we don't discuss negotiation pieces, but because this was a very big issue, and I know several board members were interested to learn more about this, I did want to address this. So first, I want to mention that I think what is the most important piece about this is that our understanding as a negotiations committee, and I discussed this to make sure that this was the case after Tuesday, is that we have never been under the impression that the mayor's offer of a single one-time payment of $225,000 would settle the contract. We met on March 26th to negotiate, and that was not our understanding through that meeting. The mayor emailed us on the 27th saying an additional $225,000 to address open contract issues. Then on April 3rd, we met in fact-finding, in mediation with a fact-finder. And again, from that meeting, it was not our understanding that the mayor's offer of an additional one-time payment of $225,000 would settle the contract. So, to, so that's kind of what I want to make sure that the board understands. That was never our understanding as a negotiations committee. Now, what I think is confusing to me, and I think a lot of folks, the rest of folks on Negotiations Committee, is that on Tuesday, it was stated repeatedly that the mayor's offer of an additional one-time $225,000 would settle the contract. It was stated by teachers, by the teachers' union, by the mayor, by students whom the mayor emailed. It's, you know, if, I think folks at home can't see it, but we have many of our dedicated teachers out here right now, I think, with the same statement. On social media, it's been stated over and over again that an additional one-time payment of $225,000 would settle the contract. And so, even though that is not our understanding, you know, I would like clarity on that. And unfortunately, the leadership from the CA is not here tonight. But if it is actually the case that the mayor's offer of an additional one-time $225,000 payment would settle the contract, then let's sell it tonight. Let's sell it tonight. The negotiations committee is absolutely ready. If the, our offer plus the mayor's offer of additional one-time $225,000 payment will settle the contract, we are ready, willing, and able to meet immediately after this meeting to settle the contract. So I don't know if, you know, the Negotiations Committee for the CA is available or not, but we've been hearing it over and over again that that one-time payment from the mayor would settle this contract. And if that's the case, let's settle it. Let's settle it right now. I see signs out there that say, "Settle now." We agree. Let's settle it now. All right. So that's my statement that I want to make and make very clear, that again, that is not our understanding of what it would take to settle a contract, but it's been said over and over and over and over and over again since Tuesday, that that is what would settle the contract. And if that's the case, then our offer with the mayor's offer of additional one-time $225,000 payment, if that will settle the contract, let's meet. Let's meet now, right after this meeting, and let's sell this contract. All right. Okay. So that was my point for Committee of the Whole. So at this point, yep, I mean, if, do board members have questions? I don't really want to go much more into negotiations, but do board members have questions?
I don't know how much we can go into communication. So I think we caveat with any questions that we have here in that it is still within negotiations, but so, not any, that would be the caveat I would put on.
I'm not going to say much other than, you know, I very much appreciate that you just said that publicly. And I would see no reason, if that's the case also, to get the deal done. So if it is, that's great. If it isn't, then, you know, maybe this is a conversation starter that they can really get, you guys can get to the details of it and figure it out. So, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say the same. And, you know, full disclosure, as a member of NJEA, I, you know, cannot say much and do not know much, obviously. However, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled to hear the willingness to get it done this minute, and I really, really hope that that can happen. I think that's great. And I was thinking the same thing. If there's a couple of issues here and there, let's work it out. And that is thrilling. I cannot state that enough. So thank you, and thank you, and I really hope that this can, this can happen, because, you know, we have work to do. Clearly, this is not the end of the road, and I think, as Mayor Malley said, getting this out of the way and getting some positive feedback from everybody is the way to go. So, thank you.
No, for, and absolutely for sure, I think we've all been eager to sell the contract. And again, it has not been our understanding that, that, you know, the mayor's offer, you know, no strings attached of an additional one-time payment of $225,000 would sell this contract, but it's been said over and over again over the last several days. And so if that is the case, if that is what will settle the contract, then, then yes, let's settle.
And again, I just want to be clear that you said that it was your other offer plus that additional $225,000.
Right, right. Yes. And I do want to go into that, because I think one of the challenges that we've had has been, again, I'm not going to detail the offer, right, but the offer's very clear. I think the CA leadership knows it, you know, it was discussed with the fact-finder, so it's very clear what it is. One of the challenges that we've discussed for a while is that having continued recurring, ongoing compounding costs, right, especially as we've seen that we've, we've had to leave 11 positions unfilled two years ago. Last year, we've had to riff 21 positions. This next year, right, right now, if we couldn't find additional revenue, we'd have to lay off 30 or 35 positions and close all those things, right? So understanding that that continued additional compounding cost is a really big issue, that I think has been one of the biggest challenges, right? And so again, that is why we have not understood that a one-time payment of $225,000 would sell this contract. But again, we keep on hearing since Tuesday on social media from teachers, from the CA, from everyone, from the mayor, that that's the case. And if that is the case, then again, we are willing to settle, and we're ready to settle tonight, right after this meeting. I've typed it all out right here, ready to sign. And so hopefully, you know, we can get this settled quickly. All right. Any other questions?
About anything?
No, about this topic.
About, about, about the tax incentive.
Yes, yeah. Oh, no, no, no. So we'll, we'll have a, we'll have, I figure we can chat about the tax incentive program.
Well, that's what I thought we were talking about.
Oh, no, no, in, in the, in the agenda item itself, because we have a short agenda.
Oh, okay. I thought that was the Committee of the Whole topic. Got it. Thank you.
Cool. Yeah. So can we, do we have a motion to close Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Fantastic. So before we get to our one actual agenda item for vote, we'll have our first public comment section. So, so the purpose of this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. Public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should go, first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening, taking notes, that we can take all this that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made by the board president at the end of public comments. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out there this week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expect to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In all fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comments, and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping the time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. And so the floor is open.
Hi, this is Crystal Ward, 325 Newton Avenue. Well, it's great to hear that you're open to settling the contract, because obviously, that's a major concern for everybody. As I'm sitting here listening, I was here a couple of nights ago, and I don't know whether or not $225,000 is all it takes to settle the contract. The question was raised. It was not answered. And it just strikes me as odd that the approach to handling this is just to announce in a public forum, "Oh, let's settle it right now, right now, right after the meeting. Are you here? Let's do it right now." Like, that just seems odd to me. It seems a bit disingenuous, and I would hope that there is a normal communication flow between, I don't know, whoever the parties are. Sounds like there's a negotiating committee. There's somebody from the teachers' union. Like, wouldn't there be communication between those bodies to have, be having regular sit-down dialogue? And wouldn't you, as the board president, know what the dollar gap is to solve the contract? I just, I'm just a little bit flabbergasted, sitting here, listening to those comments. Point number two is on the tax levy. I want to reiterate my position that, as a local resident, I am strongly opposed to a significant material tax increase when the BOE has an option of almost $1 million of free funding being offered by the borough. I get it that you want to take advantage of, you know, this opportunity to raise taxes based on the cap, but as the mayor was trying to explain the other night before he was interrupted, that there is an opportunity to bank the cap. So why not do whatever you can to take advantage of free money offered by the borough and delay as long as possible giving a large tax increase to residents? Almost $1,400 tax increase, even, even, even the minimum per year options the other night of, what was it, close to 700 or 800, if I remember correctly, is still a major burden on every household. And we're going to be pricing people right out of town, and then where are we going to be? We're going to be right back here in the same situation. And I also wonder, as point number three, if so many other districts are facing the same problem, have you been actively engaging in dialogue with other districts to see how you might consolidate, how you might help each other out, what other options do we have? Because if we have 600 districts and 300 of them are significantly underfunded, why are we trying to solve this just on our own? So this, I just wonder if really there has been enough research and investigation and collaboration and partnership to try to really figure this problem out. And I don't see much action at all trying to involve residents in this dialogue, as was promised last month. So thank you for hearing me, and hopefully you can get this damn contract settled.
I just want to address the comments that Roger made. The negotiating committee hasn't been clear and hasn't understood the 220 number. When that, that number came about at our meeting on March 27, when we, when it was Beth Ann, Fred, we got for the end of it, where we talked about and kind of finalized, or I thought went a long way to finalizing what the budget number would be under the, under the prior plan, before things on April Fool's Day happened, before the, the change with the state rules. And when we finished that budget number, I asked, "What would it cost to resolve the contract?" I asked, "What it would take to resolve the contract?" Beth Ann actually had to get, go, leave the table for a second, and got her notes, and came back and said, "265," okay? And I said that we would add into what the, what the borough was going to pay into the, into the, into the, into the district, that we would add 200 in, and that there was some concerns about whether or not, there had been some chatter that the borough was not going to honor this. And so I said that we would amend our agreement and specifically say that we were making this payment for this year upfront and adding in that 200. I went back to the office, changed that language. I actually made it 220, because it made the number even 2,008, that we were going to be bonding for it. When I told, when we had this discussion at the meeting, I had asked Fred to come sit in on that part of the discussion. He said, "Well, I'll have to get an MOA together before the fact-finding." That's how I left that meeting, believe this was, this was what was getting it done. We were there. That understanding under that plan was that there would be an operations, operations referendum coming after that, so that whatever was remaining to be done in the contract would be addressed in that. So that's how, that's where it came about. This isn't just me throwing something out. When I left that day, I, I think we all had the understanding that we were getting an MOA together, that it was done. The contract was resolved, okay? That's where that comes from. Second thing is, there seems to be a misunderstanding. What I talked about the other night with all the commotion that was going on, what I talked the other night was not that we could bank, that you could bank the tax levy. What I talked about was that I was having conversations with legislative leaders, the governor's office, to make changes to the state rules to set up a bank, okay? Had more of those discussions today. Had, had communications with the governor today. And there are, there are, there's work being done to decide, everyone seems on board with that idea. It is, the rules have not been changed yet. They're trying to decide whether or not it would be done as part of the budget process, the state budget process, or it would have to be separate legislation. All I did was to try to advise you that that was underway, and if that was possible, to stay open to the idea that the borough assistance was still there, still, we were still ready to do something, that if we were going to bank it over a few years and ease the taxpayer impact, that we could help offset to make up the, to get to the 3.6 gap to fill the year, that it was still available. That's all I was here to talk about the other night. Things got a little, went a little bit of a different direction, but that's where the contract issue, issue came from, those numbers, and that was the reason for me being here the other night. I'm still hopeful that the bank happens. It's got no impact on what you're doing tonight, but if it does happen, the borough stands ready to try to fill it in to reduce that taxpayer impact more. That's all. Thank you.
Hello. Evan Lindhart, 42 East Madison. Just wanted to thank you all for your hard work in navigating this very urgent situation. Our kids really deserve the opportunity. Our community depends on strong schools. And of course, we know this crisis is not unique to Collingswood. It's a broken state funding formula affecting us all. It's not just about budget issues, certainly not about priorities. It's about a state-level failure that we cannot ignore. And now, of course, for the first time, we have a real opportunity to take control. We've been waiting for this chance to be able to save ourselves. No one else is going to come and do that in a meaningful way. And the time is now, and I'm so pleased to see that you will be applying for the maximum funding to support our students, number one, our teachers, and our community. The board must fight for the maximum possible funding to buy time, to create stability, to buy time for some of the mayor's solutions, for the partnership, for the regionalization, for all of these mergers and, and things that we have as ideas, but don't have right in front of us right now. So I'm very hopeful for that, but I'm very proud to see that we're moving forward with this. I also really want to address one other thing, which actually concerns me very deeply. You know, as we continue to deal with these complex problems, it's been troubling for me, as I've listened and attended, that I see that board members are not seeing critical materials, or seeing them, I'm sorry, seeing them for the first time during public meetings. You know, this undermines the public trust. It hinders progress. Our kids deserve better. And each one of the board members is personally responsible, as elected officials, to come to the meeting prepared so that we can receive the best outcomes. So preparation, basic expectation. This is a pivotal moment for our community's future. Strong schools are a foundation for strong communities. So please meet this moment with urgency, as I know you are, with responsibility and a commitment that our children and this town deserves. I appreciate you all.
Hi, my name is Karen Tanyer. I've been a teacher at the high school since 1998. I would really like to thank the gentleman who just spoke, but he said that this was all predicated on taking the state money and getting the job done for the students and the community and the teachers. I have never felt less a part of that equation than I have in the last two years, as I've come to these meetings. Before this began, I'd come to maybe five board meetings maximum, because I felt that the board truly understood that if you don't support teachers, you're not going to have a supportive environment for students. I do not feel that exists right, right now. I feel that someone once told me that the board and people on the board believe that they can speak things into existence. And I've seen that happen. I've been at meetings talking about the curriculum, where they talked about new classes, and I said, "That's not how you make a new class. You can't just say a new class is going to exist. You have to write a curriculum. It has to be approved. It has to be vetted." And then the very next year, a new class arrives that was not vetted, that serves no purpose, and then disappears a year later. When you speak things into existence, you're not governing. You're not educating. You are believing that you know what is best for all of us, and believe that you can bypass due process to make it happen. That's not logic. That's faith. That's a cult. You need to come here and follow the same rules we've followed for the last 25 years. And I feel like that's not happening. I feel like if you, you repeat what we understand is misinformation over and over again, you think we're going to believe it. And I'm afraid that that is happening, not just at the local level, but everywhere. And I caution you, don't burn what little faith we have in this organization by doing that, because you're not supporting the students and you're not supporting the community. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Sarabian. I don't live in Collingswood. I live in Greenwich, New Jersey, about an hour away, and I've been teaching here for the last six or seven years. You know, it's funny, when I was coming here today, I was actually thinking in the back of my head, things of like, that I wanted to say. But it's interesting that now, after listening to what was just said, I can't help but think about the emblem that I weigh around my lanyard. It's of Superman. And he is a representative of hope. Now, here's my thing. The last couple of years or so, I have not really been feeling that much hope, especially when I hear things being said on both sides by the Board of Education who say one thing and then do another thing, when people come to the table with good faith and then things don't work out. You have a mayor who spent a tremendous amount of time and effort putting together a phenomenal package, which almost revitalized our hope that things were going to be better, only to have the rug pulled out from under us. So I'm not going to stand here and lambast anybody or anything, because all I want to say right now is, if you truly want to settle and give us a fair contract, I hope that that really is your intention. Because I will say right now, I don't think the staff, the parents, the town, we can't afford to have the rug pulled out from under us again. It's only going to get worse. So please, do what is right. Follow the intention of hope to make things better. Follow with truth and with justice and hope for a better tomorrow, so that this way, we can get our, we can get our schools back together, the students can be happy, the parents can be happy, the town can be happy, and we can make this place better for everybody. I work, not only do I teach, but I also have a club called Trek Wars, where we talk about all the fandoms that students love. And I wear the symbol here. And one of the key things in Star Trek is the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. So please, act for the needs of the many, and let's settle this. Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Sealy. I'm the principal's administrative assistant over at the middle school. Sorry, I'm short. And I grew up in Collingswood. I lived here until I married my husband, who also grew up in Collingswood, and we moved to Barrington, which is a lovely little town. We wished we could have bought in Collingswood, but, you know, teacher salaries, stuff like that, stuff happens. I'm going to go off of what Tim said. I started during COVID. I didn't have a first year of school. We closed down in March. They sent us home. We worked from home, and then we came back in shifts. And it was hard. It was really hard. Here I was, my first big-person job, right? I'd worked hourly. I, you know, all that stuff. This, I had a pension. I had all these things. And this huge thing happened. And we were like, "It's okay. We got it. We're going to do it. We're going to do what's best for the kids." And we did. And we worked hard. We worked really, really hard. And then they started to come back, and they were different, and sometimes not in a good way. And we worked even harder for them. You talked about getting this tax levy, which I You talked about getting this tax levy, which I think is wonderful. Anything that you can do to bring in money for the borough. I still have family who live here and they pay taxes. They're, "Okay, that's fine. Absolutely, let's do it." Taking away any kind of hope that we have, which is, no offense, kind of what you keep doing because it's a statement, and then, oh, next day, here's another statement, but it's different than the first statement. Those of us who have continued to hold out this little bit of hope that we can continue to help these kids and do what's best for them, that grain of hope is so small these days. It is so small. And it is getting harder and harder to hold on to that and not just give up, like truly give up. I wanted to be a teacher, and I didn't finish school to be a teacher. Things came up. I had kids, all that fun stuff. But I thought, "Well, I can do something good by working here. So let me go and I'll work at the school that I went to. I went to." For years. Great, I can do something good. I cried Saturday, and I thought, "I'm just going to give up on the educational sector completely." That's where we're at. We're going to, we're going to give up at all.
Thank you, Ms. Sealy.
Hi, I'm Danielle Patterson. I teach at Mark Newby School, and I live at 122 East Madison Avenue. I'm standing up here on behalf of the CEA Negotiations Committee. Please reach out to us in a professional manner, and we'd be happy to negotiate the contract. Thank you.
Mike Pallucci, Vice President of the CEA. As you can imagine, I got about 75 texts in the last 15 minutes. So I will just say, there is a process and a procedure. Robin is the CEA President. You got to email her, send her an email. This has to be drafted behind closed doors, and MOA has to be signed. All right, this is not the way to do it. But again, we're not that far apart. Okay? We're not that far apart. We're almost there. We want to settle this, okay? The people who teach your kids, those of you who have kids, the people who teach them, want to settle. They want to do their job. Let's be professional, and let's return people's emails who have reached out, and let's do it, okay? Thank you.
My name is Nate Canaus. I live at 245 East Madison Avenue. I'm a teacher also, not in this school district, elsewhere. And I've always thought like it'd be cool to like teach in the town that I live in. And I came here to actually talk about the support for you guys taking advantage of the opportunity you have at hand right now for the 5%. Like, there's going to be no other better opportunity for you to take care of the schools, the teachers, and the students. You could do things like bring back activities, work with the teachers to bring in programs, and add value to the borough here because of the programs that the school can employ and do. Okay? Now, I'm not a public speaker. I'm a teacher. So bear with me while I kind of think about my next step here. I like wait time in my classroom. It really, whoops, it kind of saddens me hearing about how we're negotiating and you're talking between these two entities in a public forum like this. In my system, in my union, in my school district, we've gone through contract negotiations. And as a teacher, I've never even heard of people getting up in public forums saying, "Here's the money we have. Here's the money we have," all that kind of stuff. I've never heard of that. It's all done, as the last gentleman just said, through a process. And to get to my earlier point, like, I would love, it would be cool to have a shorter commute. It would be cool to work maybe where my kids go and learn, but it's, as a teacher, it's disheartening to hear how this process is going. So again, do the 5%. Build up the community through your system. Build the education system back here. When I first moved here, people were like, "Let's hear about those schools." Like, hang, hang tight. I'm like, "Okay." I didn't have kids at that point. I believe in these schools right now, and I believe everybody in this room can work together to figure this out, okay? So thank you. I look forward to talking. I'll talk to you guys again in the future.
Seeing as there are no more public comments, I'm going to address a few points, and then we'll move on to the resolution at hand. The first point I want to mention is that I think there was discussion tonight about the idea that the district has turned down $1 million of free money. And I want to make sure that we're very clear that nowhere within any joint statement agreement or whatever that we've had as a, as a board has there been free money. All of the money that, that has potentially been provided to the board, let's say either through pilot money or through borrowing money using redevelopment bond to provide it to a school, that money is taxpayer money. None of this money is free. So I want to make sure that that's clear. In the end, we all, as taxpayers, must pay for the public services that we demand. There was a comment about ensuring that all board members had information, critical information before board meetings. And so I want to make sure, because this came up before, that we're clear that the information that was discussed at the board meeting on Tuesday, all that information was provided before the board meeting to board members. The specific cuts were discussed on March 6th and March 7th with the board. The program was discussed over, I can't remember the exact dates, but two separate emails last week to the board. The specific scenarios that were presented in terms of the tax raises, those were shared with the board the day of as we were still working on the presentation in order to present it. So idea that board members were not informed of all the information that was discussed is just false. Finally, I'd like to address the comments by our mayor about how the amount of $225,000 came up. Again, I would like to stress that as a negotiations committee, that amount or 260, according to the mayor, is not at all close to what we understood to be the gap. But, again, one of the, but again, so I think something that I have to stress is because there are continued, year after year, compounding costs that we have to keep in mind. But again, what has been said publicly in this room by the CEA, by the teachers, by online, by the CEA, is that the mayor's offer, no strings attached, of additional $225,000 would sell his contract. And if that's the case, again, I believe that we absolutely can settle. I think there's another point when it comes to the, talking about the resolution, but I think we can address that during the actual conversation on the resolution. So at this point, I'd like to move on to section number four, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig is a chairperson, and he will present.
I'll do my best to speak into the microphone. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. One item up, which is the Tax Levy Incentive Aid Application Submission, which is 402, and I will read the resolution into the record. Resolution to submit an application for additional expenditures and acceptance of tax levy incentive aid, whereas the New Jersey Department of Education has released guidance dated March 28, 2025, authorizing eligible school districts to apply for increased general fund appropriations under the FY 2026 State Budget Appropriations Act. And whereas the Collingswood School District qualifies for this opportunity having a general fund tax levy below its local fair share and total expenditures below its state determined advocacy budget for the '25-'26 school year. And whereas the district proposes an increase in general fund appropriations totaling $6,442,543, consisting of a $6,135,755 increase to be raised to the local tax levy, an additional $306,788 to be provided as tax levy incentive aid from the state of New Jersey. And whereas the board has reviewed and affirms the application and support of the strategic use of these additional resources to support instructional programming and maintaining fiscal sustainability. Now therefore be it resolved that the Collingswood Board of Education hereby approves the submission of the application for increased appropriations in the amount of $6,442,543, approves the application for an increase to the local tax levy in the amount of $6,135,755, and accepts the anticipated award of $306,788 in tax levy incentive aid from the state of New Jersey. Be it further resolved that the board authorizes the school business administrator to complete and submit all documentation necessary to fluctuate the application and incorporate the approved increases in the FY 25-26 budget once approved. Be it further resolved that the board affirms that the additional funds shall be used solely to support a thorough and efficient education as required by NJSA 18A 7F-46 and 18A 7F-70 and consistent with all NJDOE guidance. So seeking approval for item 402.
Is there a motion? So moved. And a second. Okay. So at this point, we'll have discussion, questions, and comments, I'm sure, from board members. I do want to start off, though, with clarification. I still want to point, pass it to Ms. Coleman, but really quickly, just to make sure everyone's clear, this step is the step to apply for the program. And so this application is due on Monday, the 14th. They gave us two weeks to get the application in. It requires line item justifications for, for the entire tax levy increase, as it says in the resolution, right? And it must be, the tax levy increase must be used to support a thorough and efficient education. The next step after we submit is that our understanding is the New Jersey Department of Education will then review the application and then get back to us with what parts of it have they agreed are necessary for a thorough and efficient education and how much of the tax levy they will approve. And then, after that, the board, through discussions, will then decide how much of the actual tax levy that they've approved that we will then make use of. And that actual vote for the actual increase in taxes, the plans for that take place on May 5th, and the vote itself will be the passage of the official school budget. All right? So that's the process and the step we're at right now. I do think that it's important for us to address a piece about the potential or about being able to bank any of this, this tax cap, and this is not our understanding. And I think, Ms. Coleman, do you want to discuss your communications with NJDOE?
Yeah, after Tuesday night, after hearing that there might be a possibility or fluidity in the application and the possibility to maybe bank it over three or five years, I contacted the state right away on Wednesday to see if this was a possibility so I could report it back to the board. And they said that it would not be. It's still a one-time application for a one-time infusion, increase our base tax levy going forward, and that banking it was not an option. So that's why it's written the way it is.
Yeah. And, you know, and I think there clearly is questions because our understanding, directly from the New Jersey Department of Education, is that there is, will not be an option to bank this. And this is important because this means that we, whatever we end up deciding to raise in May is the, is the only amount that we'll be able to close our funding gap by. We won't be able to do this again in future years, right? If it were bankable, we could maybe spread out over several years, but, but if, because it, our understanding is that it isn't, we can't, and we have to do it this year. Now, I think what's unfortunate is that, is that it seems that the mayor has had conversations with folks, higher folks in the state that have said that that might be a possibility. I know, this is not our understanding. I think it's unfortunate because last Friday, via email to the mayor, via phone call on Friday, and also a phone call on Saturday, I asked, as board president, to be part of those conversations that the mayor is having with the New Jersey Department of Education and with the governor's office. And, and the mayor declined each time. And I think it's important for us to have representatives from the board in those calls so that confusion about whether or not we can bank the cap doesn't continue. And so that, I think that, you know, potentially, if there are future calls, then I think it's really important for a representative of the board to be on those calls with the mayor so that we can have clarity on whether or not we can actually bank the cap. Are there, are there questions or comments from board members?
So I, I just want to let the community know that we hear them, and we appreciate all the feedback, and we appreciate all the teachers coming and talking tonight. And Crystal and everybody that got up to speak, we really appreciate it. We hear you. Two things that, I guess, that I gather from this whole process is, is one, if we, if we took advantage of this, that there is the 5% incentive from the state, which makes, which makes sense to me. And the second piece of it is that if we were to go out for a referendum, that there would be a lot of overhead expenses as a result of that. So, and we would not have the 5% incentive from the state. So with those two things, that is leading me more in favor of this, although I do want to say that we've, I specifically very much recognize the impact that this has on the community. I also think that it is extremely imperative that we settle the teacher's contract. I mean, there's no secret there. I want to make sure that they feel valued and they feel heard, and it makes me tear up when I, when I hear that they don't. I don't know what we can do about that as a group, but that needs to be addressed for sure at some point in time, in the very near future. I did understand Mayor Malley's information the other night as a possibility, not as a definitive. So the way that I understood the information was that he's been talking to people, and this may be a possibility. This may be something that they're not willing to share with districts yet, but it may be something that they're willing to share with local politicians. I, I don't know what the reason is, but in any event, I wanted to say that we do hear you, and the things that are important to you are also important to me. And those are the reasons why I think that this is something that we need to take advantage of, and I just want to put that out there.
I want to reiterate again from, I think this came up a lot on Tuesday, like, the reason that this is even an option is because of direct advocacy to the state saying that the 2% cap was an issue. And that's been work that this board has been involved with, and with, in partnership with districts like ours that are facing similar situations. And that's how we've gotten to this point. I don't think that it means that we stop advocating because I think if there is an option where we can bank this over time, we, we go for that. But I don't think we can even get to that unless we put in the application and we get approved for it. So I think we continue to move forward with this while we continue to ask and demand more from our representatives in Trenton. And I think I do welcome the opportunity for the board to be partners with the borough and to sit in partnership in these meetings and talk about how this is going to impact us both. I think that's what everybody wants to see, and I think that's what we can commit to be, to doing. Yes, our voices together are going to be more impactful to say what needs to happen here because I'm sure every other district that is considering and weighing this is also having to weigh the impact that it's going to have on their taxpayers, but also knows that their kids deserve this money.
So I just wanted to really, you know, I've been taking some notes, looking at other notes, and echo Kelly, what you've said and Matt as well, and really recognize that we, like, partnership- and really recognize that we, like, partnership is still really critical. So like, we cannot miss that or lose sight of that. We are only stronger together. And I feel like it, there's this tension that, like, nobody's trying to go solo in doing any of this. Right? I don't think anybody wants suffering at the other side of, like, trying to sustain one entity versus another, right? It isn't either or. And so I sit in a space of our communication could be clearer and with intention of partnership and that we will show up in that way with each other and hold each other accountable to doing that going forward. I also really want to, there's nothing confirmed or sure about anything. I think since we've sat here with a resolution to today, it's all hope and aspirations to get on a solid footing. And so we need to do our best to get all of the avenues open and see how everything folds out to come up with a really comprehensive plan. We don't know, right? I think we have to, like, be really transparent about that. We could send an application and it gets slashed in half, right? So I, I, I want to be really prudent that we must put our best foot forward in partnership with the borough and hold the state accountable to showing up and not saying stuff and doing nothing. And I also, I just have to speak to, what homework have we done? What does it look like? We're looking everywhere, turning all the rocks over. I think my eyes will cross by the level of information and articles we're getting to see how this has played out everywhere. What do we look like? What do we not look like? What do we do that that place is doing? We are trying to get there. And there's a long game, but there's a right now. Like, there's a right now importance for contracts. There's a right now importance for getting programs that are going to enrich and continue to build on the successes in our schools. And we must make the first brave step of getting on a sure footing and then come together and come up with a plan. Like, that is a, I think, that is a requirement and really partner so that it works for everyone.
So let me, so I, I'd like to just weigh in really quick. Sorry, Sarah. And so I do not disagree with anything that our board members have shared. But I'd like to change the tone for just a moment. I feel like I'm at a funeral. And so I think that it's extremely important for us to actually celebrate what advocacy looks like. And so I just want to, I want to remind for, for the public, for the community, for those who are online, is that we began talking about structural budget deficit in twenty twenty-one. This is not a new conversation. We put systems in place in order to make strategic reductions. It did not impact people in year one. We leveraged grant funding, going out for philanthropic support in year two to give us more time while continually advocating, both at the local, at the, and at the state level, for opportunities for the community to have the financial footing that they desperately needed and demanded. And so, letter campaigns in Collingswood and Oakland, community members, some of you in this room, many of you online, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for the letters, for the notices, for the phone calls that you made to our local and state representatives advocating for funding flexibility and more of an investment that prioritizes students. I want to thank the New Jersey Policy Perspective for writing a technical, pretty meaty report directly to the New Jersey Legislature, asking for dramatic change to the school funding formula, because there were issues with the formula that were widely known. We've been talking about this school funding formula since two thousand nine, not a new conversation. I want to thank all of the community members who have already joined and I want to encourage you to join the New Jersey Fair Funding Collective. This was started by concerned Camden County community members as an advocacy group to ensure that all school districts across the state of New Jersey receive funding that they need for fair and equitable education. I also want to thank the board members from the dais and the individuals here and the ones online who participated in the School Funding Reform Act public hearings with the New Jersey Department of Education. These were brave community members that spoke publicly from the heart about why this was so important. I also want to thank two of our community members for the Bridge to Gap resource website. On their own, we had community members that came together and they did the hard work of making this crazy funding formula and all of the moving parts make sense using real terms, not the edgy speak. And they have continued to advocate as community members with no fight in the game other than they want a positive environment for their kids and for their community to be able to provide meaningful information to help this make sense for the average layperson that doesn't have time to dig into the details. And so thank you to the Bridge to Gap. I want to thank the, the borough. I want to thank the borough for being a collaborative partner, looking at this financial challenge and being willing to come to the table to assist with making sure that we had stopgap measures in place in order to avoid unprecedented and drastic budget cuts. And then finally, I just would like to just bring attention is that the advocacy that has been taking place by and large across the state for several years has directly translated into this one-time exception. And so I am boldly saying, as a taxpayer, as a parent of two small children who attend Collingswood Public Schools, we moved here in twenty seventeen for the schools. I was already a superintendent. I did not move here to be the superintendent in Collingswood. I was already a superintendent. We moved here because we saw how our, how the teachers and how the community stepped up for their kids. During COVID, when the world was losing its freaking mind, we saw teachers get in their cars, beep the horns to stand outside socially distanced to tell children, we love you and we miss you. That's why we moved here. And it is disappointing that we're looking at the collective efforts of so many in this room as a negative. And so I'm going to say that this is a moment for us to celebrate folks coming together and fighting for the children and the families in this community, fighting to make sure that there is stable funding to be able to give our educators the, the salaries and the compensation that they rightfully deserve, funding to make sure that we don't have to close schools or do dramatic and drastic cuts to programs that our children desperately need. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were for the public record and for the roughly fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred individuals who are watching this on social media, that we are celebrating what advocacy looks like. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that, Dr. McDowell, because I was just going to say, I think it's really worth looking at. There was a comment, like, why aren't we reaching out to other districts? Why aren't we working in partnership? And the advocacy, especially from the Bridge to Gap program, made it so plain. Our next step, I'm, I'm a member of the New Jersey Fair Funding Collective, our next step is to meet with legislators. We are going to be meeting with some, a group of them likely in Ju, in May or in June to continue this effort. So building off what Mr. Craig brought up and Dr. McDowell was saying, like, this is a continued effort. This is a first step. But this is the product of that advocacy, of coming together with other districts, of working in partnership and going to the highest level. And the three hundred or so districts that are doing this are also celebrating this opportunity because this is going to resolve, or, or how people sleep at night. Board members, superintendents, teachers and families. And so I think it is important to, to keep in mind that this is just the first step.
I, I also appreciate all the positivity. I just, I recognize that people are scared and they're frustrated and that's, that's why we're here, right? And it's not our fault that necessarily that the state is putting us in this position and it is what it is. But we do hear that people are scared and they're very frustrated. But there are a lot of things to celebrate, for sure. A couple of things. I think that this is a very fluid situation and things are changing rapidly. So again, like Zakiya said and like Jim said, we really don't know from day to day how this is going to go. So everybody keep that in mind, that this is a very fluid situation. And you've got all of us walk, you know, talking and, and trying to, trying to make it happen for everybody as, as much as we possibly can. The other thing I wanted to say is that the borough partnership is still a thing, still very much a thing. We have no intention of canceling any partnership with the borough whatsoever. I think I speak for all of us when I say that. And should this work out with the state, we're still partnering with the borough. Should this not work out with the state, we're still partnering with the borough. We want to make sure that, you know, our needs are met as a district as best that we possibly can. And Roger, I just want to bring attention to you pointing out about the information that board members receive. I stand corrected. I did not see that you had sent an email three hours prior to the board meeting with some pertinent information, although I do continue to say that I did not get to see the full presentation. I would like to see the full presentation in the future, but, you know, you are correct, you did send the email that I did not see till the next day. So I wanted to point that out to the public as well.
I'll also mention that, that I think the, that I definitely strive to get that information out earlier, when possible. Because I understand that was there.
I do agree.
The, the other, and the other issue, I think you mentioned, which is that it, it's a fluid situation. And in terms of, you know, the presentation, we were working on it over the weekend and, and through and, and basically until the, the board meeting happened. And I think one of the things that we have to be cognizant of is that our administrative staff is the administrative staff for two separate school districts that are both going out for this tax levy incentive aid program, right? So had to have to redo everything for two districts within two weeks. And I think that's one of the reasons why we're, things were, were, haven't tied. Yeah. But for sure, I think we absolutely, I know Kate and I have, have tried our best to communicate clearly with board members.
I, I don't want to belabor what has already been said, just to say that I, I do agree with a lot of, of what has been said from, from everybody. What I wanted to add is that, yes, this is, this is a relief. I, I remember your, your initial email. I have, I have great news. This, this is something that has been, and this is my third year on the board and, and these have been conversations every year. And it's been heartbreaking to watch what has happened. But that being said, you know, Cr- Crystal, I hear you and, and I really do. And I, I'm thinking about what, what my tax bill is going to look like as well. Absolutely. So, you know.
And it's not done by income. It's not based on people's housing estimate.
I know.
Which makes it really, really hard for a lot of people.
I know. Believe me. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be exempt from that. So, so I, I just wanted people to know that I, I do appreciate that. So, so, you know, I, I, I don't think this is, this is a funeral. You, you are correct. There's a lot to celebrate, absolutely, with the advocacy. But I think also, we also have to have a response, we have to be responsible since we are going to be levying taxes on the community. We, we just need to explain to them that, that we do hear them, that this, this is not easy for anybody. And, and that we appreciate that. And I also do hope that regardless of, of the conversations, that maybe there will be some fluidity, considering this is a, an election year. Hopefully that will be something that, that lawmakers and, and, you know, the, the governor will take into account as well. You know, we, we can continue to be hopeful. So I just, I just wanted to say that. And also that this isn't the end of the story either. And, and as board members, it, it will also continue to be our responsibility, once we do get the number from the state, to all of us engage in conversation about the budget, how that money will be, will be used and, you know, engaging in those discussions. I think that making sure that they go to, you know, student-facing programs, the teacher's contract being a huge part of that is essential. And we just need to continue to have the discussions about that, those decisions being made responsibly and with everybody's, you know, best interests at heart. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing as there are no more questions or, or comments, thank you, board members. Can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Coleman?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mr. Chip?
Yes. All right. Moving on to section five, our second section for public participation. I'm not going to read out the, the whole spiel about it, but because I think most people were here for the first piece. But this, the purpose of this public comment section, it's for additional, more general comments. So it doesn't have to be about agenda items. As a reminder, in fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute timelimit per person during public comment. And Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing as there are no public comments, then we'll move on to section six, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? And is there a second? All those in favor? Good evening.